Super Hit 1049 W A X I Rockville Clinton.
Well, folks, we're waiting on a few people, but we're just going to go ahead and start.
United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, so we have, is there a fellow here from Suez? Hey, okay, you're up first.
I'm up, very good, thank you. Okay, so I've been here before the last few years, Jeff invited me back again.
Okay.
And so, so I know your two water tanks, you got north one and south one, both 400,000 gallons. And we have a Saska, and we've priced them, the most recent pricing is spreading out the renovation costs.
Right.
You all heard about inflation?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not transitory, it's real. Okay, my manager told me that we pro, two years ago, we spent a million dollars a year in diesel, times three now.
Oh, my God.
We have two tank price increases this year already, and then we'll have another one first of the year. Why, why I remind you of inflation is, I'm going to show you an asset management program, you lock in the prices. Okay, so it's locked in, we're about economies of scale, we have eight thousand tanks nationwide, we're the largest in this business, so we can absorb some of that. Okay, so I have, I'll just pass these around, I have, basically, Jeff said I shouldn't do my PowerPoint, but here's the pricing and so forth, you know, I'm worried with my picture, he's gone through that already. What we've done is, the tanks are in horrible condition, we can, we don't want any paint over paint that's still holding on, but the first tank, the south tank, needs it in about four years.
Yeah.
So, we're good, so, basically, I have a spreadsheet here that shows the scope of work, so that the, the south tank, we look at overcoating in year four in 2025. And then in year seven, we do the interior work, you follow me there?
Yeah.
I'm sorry how small it is, but that's our reality, and look at 20 years here. But we can, and then the next year, the north tank, we did, in 2026, we do the exterior overcoat. So we're in a situation where we can still overcoat your tanks, which, the paint has not gone bad, but you're getting close, okay, we still have adhesion. I expect to be another, probably five more overcoats down the road, get you out 50 to 60 years before finally, we've built that paint up, and they've got to take it off, you know.
So your inflationary numbers are in these numbers?
This is, this is, this is, this is the fee right here, okay, so we're locking at this fee. In the contract, just because of how it's gone, there's a clause in there, this is not a contract, this is, this is fixed fee, next step would be the contract, if you agree to this scope of work and pricing. In the contract, there is a clause in there that says, if we have two consecutive years of 10% inflation, we need to sit down and talk about things, you know, we need to come to the table and negotiate again. I hardly expect that, and we're already there, I hardly, yeah, we knock, I would, I can't believe it. Not in our lifetime we've ever seen that, but that's just up there.
Okay.
I put a little, in the blue down here, sometimes you look at these numbers, basically, it costs a half a million dollars to paint each tank, for both tanks, about, you know, 2,500, quarter million dollar per tank. So you're looking at, the next time you paint both tanks, it's a half a million dollars about, okay? I, I, it's a lot of money, okay, so I always, I like to put in consideration, if you look at your meters, okay, you got about 1,650 service connections, so that's your revenue. I always like to think about this stuff, and so I, I put up, put some calculations in here. Going forward, you know, it's basically about $50 a year per connection to take care of these tanks forever. So you're not taking on a loan and debt and et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, it's historically, that's what we've done, we, you know, we go take out a loan every couple decades, and we're paying it off, and by the time it's paid off, we're here, we are again, we gotta have to do something.
And that's why asset management has been recommended, let's get away from this debt, debt, debt.
Right, right, the state came out a few years ago with, yeah, you guys need to do that. And, so yeah, this is part of our responding to that. Okay, so, anything else you need to point on, I mean?
I'll point out, yes, sorry, bottom here, I put some, I mean, the contract, if you agree to this price and this going forward, the contract really spells out exactly what we do. Because we're all not going to be here when we're doing work down the road, down, and so, this contract is like, well, Veolia has to do this, and this is the fee you have to pay, but in the contract, it talks exactly what type of paint or better, exactly type of work. If I look at the north tank, that's the older tank, it needs some ocean improvements, I listed all those things in there, but in the contract, it really outlines exactly what we'll be doing.
Now, we put up a new tank down south here, is it a new, it's not the original tank, we put up a new one back in 03 or something, maybe?
The south tank was...
This is a newer one.
It's a new one, south tank was built in 04, 2004, the north tank was built in 78.
Okay.
So the north tank needs some more repair work to bring it up to specification, that's all listed in there, to bring everything up to code, but they, you painted them both at the same time, okay?
Yeah.
So that's where we're at, ran out of both, we're both, the paint's getting old, you know, you've done a good job, and also, now we gotta start watching it, that's why we, we look to paint them in four years and five years, you know? And locking in prices today, we have reference lists, I can, all around you.
I think we have that from a year ago.
Yep.
Yeah.
It's like I told, told you on the phone, you know, we're at that point in our budget discussions and looking at some different things that, I think the board's very interested in pursuing this, so I'm sure we get a full board at some point in the next month or so, we're going to have an answer for it.
Yeah, we're, we're, it's in our preliminary budget right now, to try, try to get something on, on a plan, a schedule. Yeah, we're still paying off the debt from 03, 04 for water, and it'll be a couple more years. And, you know, that's the last project, which must have been the south tower and some paint. So yeah, we can prevent going in debt for a couple million every 20 years, it's probably a good idea, because you're always just treading water, using it, it's just, it's this vicious cycle.
And it gets more expensive.
Yeah.
We don't know what's, we can tell you what it's going to be, we control some of these costs, you know, and we're a big company, you know, economies of scale helps.
Where is Suez, what's her home country?
So, what the deal is, so, long time ago, Zadon's on painting tanks down Georgia, utility service company.
Okay.
And then all of a sudden, they got big, 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 and then Suez bought them, Suez out of Paris, Suez built the Suez Canal and over 150 years ago.
Yeah, so it's a French.
French, out of Paris, yes, they bought, that was about 15 years ago, and really didn't do a whole lot, then about 10 years ago, invested millions and put in service centers and really grew our company. Most recently, Veolia bought this part of Suez.
Veolia?
Veolia, another French company, there were two dudes in Paris, that, long time ago, people were dying because they were drinking sewer water, and decided to solve the water problem, one was Suez, one was Veolia, the two of the largest water and waste companies in the world, well, Veolia just bought a lot of the Suez business, including us, we're advanced solutions, basically utility service company. The contract will be utility service company, parent company, Veolia. It doesn't make, we're still, we're still, you know, America in here, doing what we do, painting tanks, concrete and steel, we're the leaders in asset management. So it doesn't make any difference with Veolia or Suez, or, or when it's a utility service company. It's gotten better because they recognize what we're doing and they're, and they're providing capital. So we're building more service centers and, you know.
So as far as paperwork, we decide to go with this contract, we, Jeff can get ahold of you and get...
I would send an electronic copy of a master, it's a master service agreement, it says how your town and our company does business, a basic terms agreement, an MSA, and then a scope of work for each one of these towers. It says exactly what we will do and exactly the fee. So the master service agreement just says, prefer to the scope of works for that kind of stuff, you know, I have some accounts where I have multiple assets, and so there's many scopes of work. But I could send that electronically as a draft copy for you to review, and then you want to redline it or whatever, and then we'll go that, you know, as soon as you're happy with that, then I send you an executable electronically, if we can move on this and, you know, we start, then, then, then it paints mine. I, you know, that's, I'm responsible for that paint.
Okay. Anybody questions, any one here? Mike, you're a water guy, what do you have any questions, Mike, you know more about this than anyone on the board. Okay. Inputs always appreciate. Yeah, okay, Jeff?
No, I appreciate Mark taking the time to come in and, you know, I appreciate the board revisiting.
Yeah, yeah, we, we've been a little cheaper maybe a year ago, but regardless, I can't remember the exact numbers, it's not a bad terrible increase here.
We, we can see we've spread this out for 10 years, which is, which is nice, you know, hopefully it doesn't bust your budget and need to take a loan out.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's the whole objective. Okay, well, thanks for coming in and...
Any questions, give me Howard, you know, you're not going to find it.
Appreciate your time, Mark.
Thank you, boy.
Okay, folks, yeah, Carla, I see you're sitting back there, I bet there's a reason.
Yeah, yeah, I guess we, somehow didn't get on the agenda, but...
Well, that's okay.
I should call today and confirm, I knew you were coming, that's all.
Okay. We love, we love walk-ins.
Oh, do you want me now, or you want to...
Yeah, yeah, let's go ahead and have you...
You sure you want this now?
No.
Okay, guys.
Well, there was Suez, now it's Veolia. Yeah, we asked him about that, they're both French companies.
Okay, it should be one for every board member and...
Trip to headquarters.
That, I'm going to start with the workers' compensation.
Okay.
So we'll start with that one first, I, well, first I want to thank Brandy and her staff, Bill McMichael, Jeff, and the others who are gracious enough to answer my questions and provide information as I need it along the way, I do appreciate that, makes things a lot easier. Thank you, ladies and guys. The workers' compensation, it's not pretty this year, and I think when I was here last year, I told you it would not be pretty. So what we've done, IPEP has given us a renewal proposal with total estimated payroll of just over 1.2 million, which is your 2021 audited payroll plus 5%. The experience modification factor, which is based on your claims, and your claims only, for 2019, 2020, and 2021, is a 2.35. So that means you're charged 2.35 on top of the standard rate. The 2022, or 20, the, the 2022 factor was 1.68, I think I've got a typo there, that I didn't catch. I said 2021, but the 2022 factor was 1.68, so you're being charged 68% this year. In 2023, you're going to be charged 135%.
Because 19 will drop off, or not yet?
Not yet. In 2024, we'll drop the 2019 claims and pick up the 2022 claims, which are just concluding. As you can see, thankfully, in 2020, there's a big fat zero under the claim, so that's helped somewhat. So when we get down to, I might say to, with this mod, 2018 claims fell off, and the 2018 claims were a little over 65,000, and we added the 105,000 for 2021. So that obviously is driving that mod factor. So our 2022 estimated premium for this year was 42,044, and we call it an estimated premium because it'll be based on your final payroll for the year and adjusted accordingly.
So how much does it go up, say, for 100,000 payroll, how much does it go up, is there any?
It depends on classification.
Of the employees, yeah.
Of the employees, so the clerical rate is less than...
It's all risk related, yeah, yeah, okay.
So our 2023 estimated premium, again, because of, we're using the payroll that I talked about earlier, is $68,253.
Okay.
So that's number one.
What's this thing attached to, the rostered volunteer?
I just always include that, it's, we have rostered volunteer coverage on here for any volunteers for the town, and we have to be given those names ahead of time, like for cleanup day. I remind Brandy and Jeff, if we have any volunteers, we need to be given the names.
Okay.
And it can provide them some limited coverage.
So about 18,000 increase, roughly?
No, 26,000.
26 from...
68 to 40, 42 to 68.
Oh, yeah, 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 26,000. Okay. All right.
I'm not finished.
I know, I know, but...
I know you want me to be.
I expected that to be, well, of course, inflation, I'm being sure you're going to have an increase, obviously, it's going to happen.
There's some extras for your missing people. Okay, this proposal is for all your other coverages, your buildings, your contents, your vehicles, your equipment, your liability.
Yeah, we have a new fire truck on, yeah.
Well, the fire truck is insured under the fire department policy.
Right.
Separately from this.
Oh, we had, we have another policy set there?
Yes, jointly with Adams Township, we insure all those fire trucks under one policy.
So Adams is picking up that?
No.
No.
No, we split the premium between, so the town's only paying for town-owned fire trucks.
Okay.
And then Adams Township's paying for their fire trucks.
That sounds fair, that's appropriate.
Yeah.
So we have a tire and a lot of truck, yeah, I think, probably have some other stuff too, if I don't know.
I can't recall.
I can't, okay.
I can't recall.
Okay.
That policy renews in May, so we can discuss that one down the road.
Okay.
Also included in this policy is your public officials liability, your law enforcement liability, your excess liability, everything that we talked about last year, there's a lot of reading in here, but I just want to mention a couple things. I did put a tab, as you see, on the premiums section, last year, you paid 57,545.
Where's this at, is that a tab?
Yep, the tab is the premium, but last, that's projected, this is our 2023 premium. Last year, you paid 57,545, and that was only five, um, seven months of owning the R E M C property, which we added last year.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so the things that we, we have in here that we didn't have last year, we've got the R E M C buildings for a whole year, we've increased all your other buildings 5%. So that our total property coverage increased about four million, a little over $4 million compared to a year ago, mostly because of the R E M C properties. A reminder on equipment breakdown, we had numerous discussions last year, and the board decided not to ensure the electrical substation equipment for equipment breakdown. So that's not covered, because you didn't cover it last year.
You know, a lot of recent, recent events, North Carolina, you know, basically, I don't know what they're going to classify it as, I'm sure you've heard about substations being shot, no?
I haven't heard.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sure, you will, it'll be, I hope so, it should be main coverage. Anyway, you know, I don't know if it'd be called terrorism or what, but you don't cover terrorism anyway.
We do cover terrorism in your policy.
Okay, we do have terrorism?
Yes.
What don't you cover, I thought you were something more?
Equipment breakdown, if it breaks down.
Equipment breakdown, you don't cover terrorism, you do, well, yeah, I guess it'd have to be classified as such so to have coverage, uh, but yeah, there's like 40,000 people without power until maybe Wednesday because somebody shot up the substation.
Well, if it's considered terrorism.
It would be covered, okay.
Or, you know, if we had a tornado, take it out, or get caught on fire.
It's normal breakage, that's not covered, that was, that was the big issue that we had.
Yes, and it's very expensive, if I recall, last year, when we had the discussion on it, it was going to cost 25 to 30 grand to cover it for just breakdown coverage.
Yeah, well, that's why we keep a good balance in electric, right, Jeff?
So that's a reminder, I mean, we can revisit that, if you want us to revisit getting a quote for that. Some other miscellaneous things, we added fencing for the R E M C property, we added for 50,000. We added the decorative lights on Jefferson Street for 68,000. We added two radar signs, which had never been added previously to your coverage, for 10,000. I think that was for both of them, wasn't it? Yeah, I think, I think it was 10,000 for two, and we did delete the K-9 coverage.
Okay.
So those were the, unlike your workers' comp, which your claims have really affected your premium.
Right.
Under this policy, it's basically your exposures that have created the increase, the additional properties you purchased, et cetera. Now, we don't have any additional vehicles yet, but I understand that may be coming, some swap out of vehicles, but we didn't have any vehicle changes this year.
Okay.
One thing, on the bottom of that quote sheet, you will see, I did look at, you have 1,000 deductible for property claims, okay? I got a quote to increase it to 2,500 and also to 5,000, I'm not sure it's really cost effective for you, but...
Yeah.
Your property premium's pretty high, because, you know, we've got 20, almost 24 million dollars coverage.
Well...
So, there's a couple of options there for, for higher deductibles. I do not have your cyber quote, last year, the board opted to purchase cyber liability, it doesn't renew until February 9.
Okay.
So I need a little more time to work that go, well, with two or three other companies, as well as...
How's it trending up, I'm sure, but is it terrible?
Um, I don't think I brought, I have a kind of a renewal quote now, and it was up about 3,000 a year, but I've asked for some alternatives.
Okay.
And it's really too soon, because we're still about 60 days away from your renewal, but I always like the opportunity to come to a meeting, so I'll be happy to deliver that quote when available. Brandy may have to help me with another application, so I can get a comparable, a couple other comparable quotes, because I wasn't real thrilled with what they gave me.
We'll get you on the agenda for that one.
You're welcome anytime.
You're so nice.
Whether you're on the agenda or not, you're welcome.
Well, things, things have gone very smoothly, short of the workers' comp. I think we only turned in two minor claims this year, which is excellent, so let's hope that trend continues.
Safety first.
Yes. Anyone have any questions for me?
Well, gosh.
I know there's a lot of information here, so...
The decorative streetlights, you said you insured those, what, what happens with that if we had a claim? Car runs over it?
Well, hopefully, if we know who hit it, hopefully that person will take care of the damage, but otherwise, we will...
What is the deductible on those streetlights?
1,000.
And they're like, how much are they light, six?
Close to seven, 7,500 apiece, I think.
We also have...
Depending on if they're the really tall ones or the short ones.
Yes, Jeff helped me with the values on Jefferson Street, and last year, when we added the market street ones, and of course, the 41, I forget how many are on 41.
72.
73, I think, 72 or 73.
They were added by, some of you may have been on the board at the time, but back when that was done.
Well, gosh, I, I don't, anybody have any questions for Carla? Appreciate all the information, no big surprises, really, I think we all were aware, it's going to be going up, need to factor it into our final budget.
Of course, we do break the premiums down by department.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I need to check the allocation on that, is it, is it in here?
No, I have not done the breakdown, I mean, I have last year's, that I'll be happy to give you.
Well, that'd be a percent, basically, it kind of shows a percent of the total.
Yeah.
Uh, and give it right here.
Did we, when, when I invoiced you for seven months on the R E M C buildings, did we put that in the general fund? Probably.
Probably so, but I, I can look and I can pull that tomorrow and get the information that I need.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it'll be... The vehicles won't change, the department's there too much, it will just be the things that were added this last year.
Yeah.
I can get even the breakout from last year, it's going to be pretty comparable.
Yeah.
Other than the thing, so yeah, it'll be fine.
Okay. Well, yeah, yeah, probably be good just to verify how we have a budget, because we, we, these were set up years ago, and we just, I imagine are pretty close, maybe interesting to compare.
All right.
Okay, well, thanks.
Anything else?
Could you clarify your name and who you represent?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Carla Losson with Branson Insurance.
Great, thank you very much.
Anne with a K.
Anne with a K, yes.
Carla with a K.
But I will do a C, no problem. Trouble in my life, so, um, so, are we tailing this until the 19th and I can come back?
Yeah, I don't think, I mean, if you want, Davey won't be here probably for another half an hour or so, at least, so...
It's up to you, I'll be happy to come back on the 19th.
I don't know how you folks feel, I mean, it's...
I think Dave ought to be here.
Well, I think it's nice.
And here, you know, and see.
Make him feel important.
Mm-hmm, well, if anyone has any questions in the meantime, between now and the 19th, give me a, give me a...
Yeah, that's our next regular one, right, yeah?
Yes.
Yeah, there's too many meetings these days, yeah, that's our regular, okay.
Okay.
Well, hey, we'll, we'll see you in a couple weeks.
That's right, all right, I'll be, I'll be back.
All right, thanks.
Thank you very much, if you need anything, let me know.
Okay.
Thanks, thanks, Carla.
Oh, boy, more numbers, um, well, where are we at?
Bill.
Bill, hey, Bill, guess you're up.
All right. The stats for the month are 33 criminal investigations in November, 402 criminal investigations, there were 309 in 2021, 132 have been violent or potentially violent in nature, there were 121 in 2021. 3,813 calls in 2022, there were 3,888 in 2021. There were 76 traffic crashes, in 2021, there were 63, we compounded 46 vehicles, last year, we did 19. Had 52 incident reports this year, we had 33 last year. 10 alarm calls for the month of November. Four felonies, 15 misdemeanors, some fractions, 22 warnings, seven traffic stops on Howard Avenue. We will be interviewing for a sixth officer soon. Brady Walters was approved through Public Safety, so now while we're waiting on his PERF, and then he'll be able to start. And that's all I have, other than we talked about the salary warrants.
Yeah, apparently, there's some question about, okay, if Brady starts for the first of the year, what are we paying, because that'd be under the old ordinance, and this new ordinance won't become official for the first year, so we're trying to figure out where he starts determines what his starting pay is, and how do we handle that? I, I don't, we don't have any resolution, do we, at this point in time, how to do that? I mean, I guess we could, we could, well, there's several options, obviously.
I, I would say if he starts before January 1st, it would have to be at the 35 light candidate, because he doesn't have the academy.
Okay.
And then I would say come January, then it would go...
Goes to the new ordinance and new amount, well, it makes it simple.
And I will just need to do, so if his PERF comes back as approved prior to the end of the year, I will maybe now do an amendment prior to January 1 to fit him accordingly if he starts before January 1.
And our new PERF salary is the base of 41, right, yeah?
Uh, no, 40... No, your PERF says it is the highest paid non-promoted employee plus longevity, so it is not your base, so it is...
Which will be 41 plus longevity.
43, 43 is a veteran per your new schedule, if you decide on it, you get a $2,000 bump, so it'll be 43,000.
Okay, good to know. Where should I note take that? where should I note take that? Just a little difference, not much.
So, and that being said, if we were to hire, uh, somebody that's already been through the academy and has some additional schoolings, that would make that PERF raise even higher, so if we hired somebody that had F T O, had six years in another department, already had the academy, that's gonna bump that up. That's gonna bump that up.
Okay.
Just as long as all of them incoming or existing understand that, that fluctuate, because that is a contribution based on percentage, so.
Okay. What status on your vehicle?
Uh, we are still waiting on the Ford dealership to contact us. Uh, last I've talked to them, they still expect the end of January for the vehicles to come in. I've not heard anything other than that.
And you're keeping which vehicle?
Uh, the vehicle I currently drive.
Okay, cause you maintained it so well, it's got the best value, right?
Yes.
Okay.
It's been in a lot fewer wrecks.
Oh, okay. Well, you're, cause you're a safe driver. Yes, um, okay. So we're getting rid of both trucks and one of the,
Explorers.
Explorers.
The one Hannah drives?
Yes.
Well, you know, our mileage should increase a little, maybe. Those trucks are probably not great on mileage.
Uh, no, they're, I, I think the, uh, Ford Explorers will definitely be better on, on the field than the, uh, still have the Tahos, they're still gonna be a little worse.
Oh, yeah, there's that issue. They're, they, they like that patrick, that gas, yeah, uh.
But.
All right, any, anything else? You guys have been pretty busy this year, obviously, you know.
Yes.
Um, so where we at in that ballistic stuff? You just waiting for it to be approved in the budget?
As far as the shields and stuff like, we're, uh, working on some grants, trying to get that, uh, also, uh.
So you're working on grants for those, but you still, you had it in your budget. You, you had in your budget.
Right, and if that's approved, then we would like to go ahead and purchase a couple of shields, uh, to start off with.
Yeah, I watched video on the use of those things. It's really, uh, handy to have in.
Very.
Situations. Huh?
I would want.
Well, yeah, yeah. Um, anybody have any questions? Okay, thanks, Bill. You can do this now. You're here, you're the official.
You're doing so good.
Okay.
Wonderful.
Thank you. Uh, what, what, where's my gen- check, can't even find my gen-
Brandy.
Brandy, they say.
I've got four is Brandy.
They tell you you're up.
And I have looked over claims with all that part.
Yeah, I hadn't got quite through all that. We started off with that guy.
Who wants to?
Uh, well, I hate to bring it up, but go back in the day when we had somebody billing us, uh, uh, the manager, uh, for, what was the name of that company? Bucks? His name was Dear or something. But yeah, they were submitting, he was, anyway, yeah, you should always look at these things.
I did.
Okay.
I was here before you.
I know, I'm happy, makes me happy.
Have a total of three fifty-seven, sixty-two, seventy-six.
So is there anything? Yeah, I see we got our typical stuff. We got the light bill, we got our debt bill. There's nothing really much in here, uh, uh, the ordinary is there. Uh, forty-one North Sewer List Station, what was that? Last thing on the structure point, forty-one North, oh, forty-one North Project, yeah. No, I, I moved, you moved? A second.
Bonds are in there.
Yeah. Okay.
All in favor?
All in favor. Okay.
The paper.
Oh.
Sorry.
First thing here.
Mm-hmm.
Claims, there's a few different sheets, but I combined it to, or, uh, billing adjustments first, nine eighty-one thirteen, um, there's everybody's percentage here. We still have a lot of just leaks. See if there's anything. We have a water softener.
Thank you.
And toilets seem to be a big one. There's those for nine eighty-one thirteen.
So, um.
I hope those have an use.
Thank you.
I'm, I'll second.
All in favor?
All right. Thank you. Okay.
And then I just have the fire contract, which is just the same one where the utility department will pay into the fire department from the water. Um, it's a total of fifty-five thousand.
It's part of, that's.
Same ones here.
To take care of wages, um, yeah.
That's part of the, the fire hydrant fees that we, we use to help offset the cost of, uh, um,
Gosh.
Josh in general. Yeah, yeah. So it went from four, up to fifty-five from forty-something?
Yeah, and that's nearly five hundred dollars. It's not necessarily just designated for salary, but that will cover his salary.
Right.
Plus an additional five hundred, but you can have that to review.
Okay, is David's the only one, David just.
He's already got it marked for back there, so.
Somebody wanna review this? I've already read it. Okay. There, so.
Do you wanna go?
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
All right. Very good.
And then, hold on, I got one more thing.
It's not on the list.
I know, I added it.
You can do that.
I can do that. Um, I just wanted to get just a approval, I don't know if it's necessary, but I would like to get an approval to just make a, a line on our fund report and our appropriation report for twenty-three. We can discuss funding later, but for our bicentennial, um, we've had one meeting, we have another meeting in a couple of weeks. Um, we're forming a rather large committee, um, so pleased with the feedback from public that would like to be part of that and contribute some ideas and stuff, so I just wanted to get an approval to create that line for twenty-three.
So it'll be on the fund report, uh.
Further funding it as well.
Would you put it? Okay.
I haven't looked up for a number yet.
Yeah, yeah.
But, um, I would like to include that.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All in favor? All right.
And real quick, I guess, maybe this is on there, about the lifecards?
Oh, sure.
We've talked about increasing the lifecards, pay rate to ten dollars an hour to state competitive, but unfortunately, with conflicts and scheduling, the park board hasn't had a chance to meet, but we're both on the park board, so we'd like to make the recommendation.
So where they at now? I can't remember.
Nine.
It's nine?
I just wanted to, if that's what the park board wanted to do, go ahead and implement that, cause that'll be on the salary ordinance moving forward.
So I'd like to make a motion to increase their rate to ten dollars per hour. A second, all in favor?
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you for remembering that.
Okay.
And that's all I have to say. Ian, did you have anything you wanted to add to our bicentennial?
No, we just need the line items.
Meeting or conversation or?
Um, yeah, we start taking in money, spending money. State or the county doesn't have a breathing year, isn't it?
Okay. Think might be next turn.
Um, need approval to order a appraisal for town hall.
Gosh, to approve, second.
All right, everyone?
Oh, all in favor?
I assume Dave might have talked.
Yes, yes, I've, I've heard the, the, that that was coming, uh.
Um, and the other party voted to approve paying for one appraisal also, so.
Okay. Somebody's interested.
Somebody's interested, yeah. Um, reminder, our bids for the three oh four Howard Avenue and our South Jefferson properties are due and, uh, our next meeting will be opened and possibly awarded, so if anybody's interested, make sure you get your bids in.
Get your bids in. So that'll be the next meeting, right?
Uh, the nineteenth, I think.
Yeah, yeah, we're two weeks from the night.
She ran in the paper. This week and next, or last week and this week? There's two consecutive weeks of that notice we ran.
Uh, so hopefully, we get some good bids in on that. Um, next court date is tomorrow for ordinance violation, um, burning trash in town. Again, please don't burn your trash in town. Um, and then followed by that, we have December twenty-seventh for ordinance violations and January twenty-fourth for ordinance violations, ordinance violations. So, that's all I have. And hopefully, some of those will be getting resolved soon, cause there's a couple that have made improvements, so.
Okay, thank you, Nick, that is.
First of all, I'd like to start out by just giving a shout out to, uh, Main Street and their little parade that they had in the hometown holidays. I think it was really good turnout. I was really pleased with the number of, I tell you, there were a lot of people that put a lot of effort into, to the vehicles and stuff, and it was, uh, pretty well attended. And I just thought it was kind of a neat thing, so kudos to those guys for, uh, getting us all in the holiday spirit and hopefully, maybe we can anticipate a little bit larger capacity next year. Uh, Indiana H two O quote, I told you last time when Steve Smith was here, that I emailed you out the, uh, financials on that, what it would look like. And I think everybody did get that email. I do have a copy here if you'd like to take a look at it. That is for the lead and water, uh, inventory information. I know we're gonna try to work that into the budget as well also. Came out to fifteen, five twenty-five as a total, uh, for the first year. And there are some recurring fees on that also for the following year. Community crossings, uh, open date for twenty twenty-three dash one is January second. So that'll be coming up on us, and it closes January twenty-seventh. Uh, a few possible roads that I'm looking at, number one, Walton Street, um, by the, uh, ten, uh, by the tennis courts and the high school.
How far down would you go on that?
I would go all the way down to, uh, uh, what's the road?
Dogwood.
Dogwood, I think, yeah.
Which that street with the cul-de-sac?
Does that still go on back to Walton?
Walton.
Is that, yeah, I don't know.
I haven't been back there to look. Maybe I need to go back there.
It is.
And see, see what kind of shape it is.
Yeah, you might wanna take a look, I, uh.
Cul-de-sac's not great, but I think the rest of it's not too bad.
Okay. Then also Howard Street from Howard Avenue down to about Erie. Uh, that one can use some work, especially where we did that dig.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that would be a good one. Also, there's a short, uh, segment on East Indiana, um, that I wasn't even aware that, that was still ours. Um, but it was brought to my attention that that's, you know, they took that bridge out years ago.
Yeah.
But it still services a couple driveways, uh, back over there to Sill Street. And, uh, I'll have to check, make sure it's still on our inventory with N dot.
Okay.
But that might be another one.
So that goes on around to Sill?
Uh, it goes, well.
Well, Sill goes down and then it.
Ends.
It ends.
It comes out to Sill, where, uh, Smiths live.
Yeah.
And, uh, yeah, it comes out right to there. And like I said, I think it services maybe two driveways. But, anyway, it could, it could use some paving too.
Would you mind to look at the little bitty tiny section of Fawn Street?
What is it?
It's mentioned every time that, I mean, even when we did those over there, that was overlooked. I'm not really sure why, even though it's, it's actually Fawn Street. It is a street, although it's just that dead end that I think two, services two driveways, but kind of the same theory there. It is a street that if it's in need of paving and it's, it's over there off of Dogwood and Valley Drive.
Oh, okay, okay.
Where Valley runs into that.
Yeah.
There's, I mean, it's, it's posted, it's a street and it gets overlooked, so I see why if we're.
It's not really in bad shape. I mean, it's got some cracks in it, but.
May not be in bad shape, but it's a matter of from here to the door.
Yeah, yeah. We can throw it on there. It's not that big a deal. We can do it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Fawn.
Visualizing.
Uh, let's see, twenty twenty-one, community crossings grant. Uh, we're still pending close out on that. I don't know, Brandy's been swamped with stuff, so it's not, not critical, uh, that we get that done. We'll get it done when we get the. Uh, we'll find out tomorrow morning about ten about North Michigan for community crossings twenty twenty-two dash two. I do have a recommendation from the electric department to approve, uh, purchase of a frost chain for the trencher. And that's from Vermeer for two thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and forty-six cents. It's a heavy-duty cutting chain, is what it is. So if the board would like to approve that.
I'll make a motion. Second, all in favor?
All right.
Item number six, uh, would like to thank Nelson Tree Service for taking down a big tree on Sill Street. And, uh, that clears the way for INPA to begin the three-phase extension there. Brad and Scott have been working, trying to clean that up. It's a huge tree. Uh, it's gonna take us a few days to get it cleaned up. I mean, it's massive. And, uh, but Nelson's did a good job on it, dropping it. It was really kind of interesting watching that guy rig up. He's a, he's a climber. He didn't use a bucket truck. I mean, he climbed and pulled himself up on that rope, and I, I was just, I was really impressed with it, so.
Is the tree dead?
Uh, no, it, it was dead. It has a couple hollow spots in the middle of it.
It is now.
Yeah, it's dead now, but it was in conflict with what we wanted to do with the three-phase, so. Uh, INPA's on board. They've got their locates called in to start on that project, so we look forward to moving forward on that. We finished up one relocation, conflict on South Market Street, uh, six oh five. Structure point wanted me to talk to the, the residents there about moving one of the flagpoles and, uh, had a conversation with them, and they're fine with it. We'll move the flagpole for them wherever they would like to be out of conflict. Uh, for the time being, they just asked that we just go ahead and take it down, so we'll do that. Also, appreciate the folks at, uh, six oh five for allowing us to do that. Do have a meeting with I M P A, uh, I guess that's Wednesday at noon to talk about meters and, uh, meter replacements, so we can kind of wrap our heads around what that's gonna look like budget-wise and maybe make some decisions about what kind of program we'd wanna to go with, if we wanna stay with our, the same radio read that we have right now, or if we wanna upgrade to what, uh, kind of R E M C has in which it's a push-button turn-on, turn-off type system. So we'll see what they, they have about that, what kind of information they can give us. Our water improvement project, the second Okra application is submitted. I don't know. Cindy's not here, uh, but I know she's got what she needs on that. Forty-one North Sewer, I haven't heard anything from Brian. I probably will get something in the next week or so to update us. They said there was, last time I talked to him, the chance that they could get started on some construction late December, uh, maybe early January on some of the boring. South Market Street, I mentioned, utility coordination continues, mentioned that. Our Jefferson Street project, uh, we still have the punch list to complete.
So the store, the stoome store or, uh, storm sewer casting, yeah, I'll get it out. Um, is that the one there in the intersection?
It's down by your end.
I was wondering.
And I'm not sure which one it is.
So that one of them's a couple inches and, and, uh, yeah, it's hard to miss in the term.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's good. That, that should probably be raised.
Yeah, they'll get that taken care of before us, and Doug still has to get our, uh, our parking lines.
Well, that'll probably be next spring, I would think, wouldn't you?
We oughta be able to get them done. It, it won't take long for us to just whip them out. It's just finding the time to.
How warm does it have to be?
It doesn't have to be that warm. I mean, we get a thirty, forty degree, forty-degree day, it should be okay. Charging station, uh, U Mac is gonna be doing the boring, still waiting on that. But I talked to the electric department about going ahead and trenching in over at our new parking lot. So, uh, that's, we can at least get the conduit and things set there.
So that'll be on concrete pads, right?
Yeah, it'll be on a concrete pad, but we're gonna run conduit all the way around the perimeter of that lot, so it'll be, if we wanna add lights, if we wanna add, we've already gotta step out for our big clock. Anything that we wanna do in the future, we've already got electricity running. So I know Dan was going over some, uh, some conduit for us and some wire.
Okay. Um, well, how's that gonna be in relation? You know, we have our parking bumpers sitting there right now and they're.
Yeah, eventually, when we go to, uh, to pave this thing in the future, we'll have curbs along the sidewalks.
Right.
So I want, we're gonna come out, well, far enough away so that we have enough room for the, uh, for the curbs to go in, so we're not running conduit underneath curbs.
Right, I'm just questioning, okay, we have our parking bumpers there. Are they gonna have to move those darn things? Are these?
Um, maybe on the, the south side, or, I'm sorry, the north side. I think the south side we should be given. I mean, we'll take a look at it and see, but if we need to scooch them in, just. I think the south side we should be giving. I mean, we'll take a look at it and see, but if we need to scooch them in just a little bit, we can.
Well, that's something that, you know, we, we haven't gotten any grade of the budget, which we'll be doing soon, but we, we, we want to have in the budget. Plans to pave that next year and do the curves. We have a quote.
Yeah.
Rough idea already what we're looking at, but.
I think that'll probably go up.
Oh, I'm sure. It'll be, uh, yeah. Okay.
Uh, Bruce and Mike, you guys got anything?
No, I don't really, I don't really think you'll ever.
I'd really rather finish up all the slides and get the bill for that.
Yeah, I was wondering why it was so low in appropriation report. So we still have another bill?
Yeah.
Okay, uh.
No, they were really late. Usually they do that before bridge.
Yeah, uh, so you think we'll have that for the end of the year?
The bill?
That bill, Megan, no, Brandy tried to pay it for the end of the year so we don't have it next year's expenses. Um. Damn it, I just had something. Getting old's not much fun. I can't remember. I just had some, oh, 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 the, the worship compactor.
Yes.
You sent out quotes on those?
I did. For the one at, uh, wastewater treatment plant, I think is the one that Roger sent me. And, um, it, keep in mind on that, that's. We would probably have to do some modifications.
Well, the building has to be.
To the building, you know?
Yeah.
So keep that in mind when you look at those numbers. I think at the, uh, the other. Uh, Strawberry Road, the number will probably be similar, maybe a little bit.
Well, roughly, if I remember right, it's a hundred eighty-five thousand for one of those things.
Yeah.
Uh, so this of rest of the board, I don't know if you guys saw that. I don't know where I got that information. Somebody sent, somebody sent it to me and I printed it out. But, uh, so yeah, you're looking at a hundred eighty-five thousand for, for one of those. And we need to, uh.
Well, and hopefully we can move back with the state.
Well, yeah, the one at Strawberry is, is, um. Obviously, there's two big customers out there. We all know who that is and, and, uh. You know, hopefully they'll work with us on that. And I, I thought perhaps, cause I'm just me thinking, working, doing what they want, but. You know, perhaps that'd be the first one we should go for and just learn a little bit about it and how it works and installation and. The other one would be down at the headworks of the sewer plant is where we need the other one. Uh, you know, the big issue we have now is moving. Sewage by loader and dumpster and that's not.
No, that's not good.
Good plan, long-term.
What we've done in the short-term part is we've set a, another roll-off over at Strawberry.
Oh, you did get one in there. You did get it in there.
We've got one in there and with a liner. And, um, so that way we're just moving it from the, the, the lift. Right around the corner there.
Well, this compactor thing, we didn't convey it right into the.
Yeah, now we'd still have to dump it, uh, to a trash receptacle, I'm assuming, uh, but.
Well, okay, I'm just.
What I'm told is that once you. Compact it and wash it, it can go to a regular landfill. It doesn't have all the restrictions and requirements of, uh, the, the non-treated.
But we can't get out of hauling it up and down the streets?
Well, I think we can if we leave a roll-off there. And it may be something, uh, that the, the trash companies. You know, I have to talk to Republic about this. If we get a washer compactor in there, will they haul it on the regular trucks again?
Well, this roll-off we have, how many yards is it?
Uh, you could tell, a couple, it's not real big.
I'm sure sitting out in the open, I haven't been out there. I mean, that's something we could probably enclose. It's a very unsightly thing to have. Uh, of course, the smell alone, kinda.
It's not so bad in the freezing cold.
Not so bad in the cold, but, uh, anyway, yeah, the, the compactor thing, I wanted to bring that up, uh. We, uh.
The guys from Republic were, were real helpful in trying to talk us through this and I know Troy's had conversations with them in the past. There's just. We just right now, there's just not a good solution to it. There's really not. And, you know. We realize it's not great having that sit out there, but it's a heck of a lot better than hauling it down.
Well, yeah, yeah.
I just, I think about one of those chains breaking.
So Bruce, have you ever worked with one of those things, a compactor?
I have not, no.
Uh. Yeah, it's, I don't know, uh, anybody around here probably would, would have one, uh.
I don't know, most people do it where we're down it right now.
Really?
Yeah, most plants around here do it exactly like we're doing it, so.
Imagine that's gonna, well, yeah, imagine that's gonna change down the road by, by, by virtue of a, a, a state code. Uh, I would think that, uh. Well. Huh?
I've done more.
Well, yeah. Okay.
Then we already talked about the water tank maintenance program with, uh, Mark. Electric guys, they need to get the lights up over at the park. And, uh, number eleven there. Maybe a little bit premature, but when the time comes, just let me know, uh, when I can advertise one job.
So did, uh.
Positions I can advertise.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd say start now and then hopefully hire by first of the year.
Well. I don't know. I mean, we need to officially, we really need to. Get the ordinance down. I guess you could start now. We know where we're going, right?
Yeah.
Um, we're talking about three general labor positions there, aren't you? Or are you looking?
I think I've got, uh.
Thanks, guys.
We got the three additional that, that you put on the books for this year. And I still have one that was open from this current year. So, yeah, I think three, if we want to start with those three, we can, the three new ones that we know for sure.
Right.
We can start.
Yeah, I mean, shoot, it takes a few weeks to get stuff. People, yeah, I mean.
So you can advertise with, you know, three open positions with a start date after whatever, January second.
Yeah, that's true.
Stayed that way.
Yeah.
Uh. Yeah, well, can we talk about Jackson Voorhees in a minute?
Yes.
See, I guess I have to go green, green light on that, Jeff. Um. Well, yeah, the P E R thing for the sewer videotaping, did, did David get ahold of you about that?
Yes, and I, I, uh, got back with Roger. And I told Roger, I said, hey, hold off on the video camera. Uh, work on that. We think that, that that's gonna be taken care of in another scope of work. Um, and Roger's okay with that. I let him know that today.
Yeah, the, the deal, the rest of the board, it, uh, we, we were looking at, uh, videotaping the sewer under Jackson Voorhees before we ever do anything with the streets over there. And, uh, we were made aware of the fact that Vector, or no, Vector, Center Point will be videotaping those same sewers. For their project and they will share that information. So why, why would we want to spend the money?
No, no double dip.
Yeah, so kind of good news, I guess. Um.
Ish.
Ish, good news-ish. Uh.
I told Roger, I said, hey, look, I don't know when we're gonna get that video recording, so don't feel like we're gonna hold you to a timeline on this P E R. Because we, we don't know when we're gonna get that, that information from Center Point, but, uh.
Right, right. Well, we have to figure out.
Sure, we're, we're a long way from there, but.
You know, under your community crossing up here, I mean. Yeah, I don't, we, we don't know enough right now to even talk about. Going after one of those streets in the community crossing using. Yeah, I, so at best case scenario would be round two next year because we're in a way, well, obviously next month. We won't know. We may not know in time for round two.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, just wanted to give you some options.
All right.
That's all I've got.
Where are we at now?
Well, U Mac just left, so I don't think we have anything.
All business, true business. Uh, so I printed out, of course, it's already changed. I just printed it out, what, two hours ago. Uh. But still, it's still good to, to look at. I, I got the latest budget. Work stuff and we, we, you know, next, well, obviously we have one more scheduled meeting, uh, regular. But, uh, we, uh, we need to get the, the, the. Budget figured out. Uh, we're, we're close. I mean, there's just some minor adjustments based on liability, insurance and, and, uh, whatnot. You know, there's, uh. There's obviously our liability and property casualties going up or workers' comp, um. Slight modification per, that won't be a big, big amount there. Um, yeah, I, I guess we can talk, I was gonna send it home with you for homework. But, uh, we can talk about it now some since we are all here and we have plenty of time, right? You know, payroll's already been beat to death. Really not much to look at there. It's, I think we're pretty much good. A few modifications, maybe. We hope to prove that tonight, but we still have a couple things to figure out.
I don't think that this is mine.
Oh, what you got there? Oh, what is that? Gosh, that's back in twenty, okay, okay, thank you. Um. Yeah, on the second page, you get down there and you see some yellow and red stuff. Um. Yeah, that's where we, we have some things that, uh.
Red's usually not good.
Well, it just identifies, you know, these are some of the different contracts. We have Empi's Service Corps. Uh, you know, the Suez, which now has changed its name. You know, I put that in there. It was a little high. It still is above what they're quoting and what we just saw tonight. Uh, we have a U Mac stuff. Sludge removal, I have forty-eight thousand. I don't know where that's gonna be a little under or not.
I thought you said it was going, didn't you just say it was going up?
It's usually about that.
Yeah, it's usually about that. I don't know it's gone up. We'll see what the next bill comes in, see what we spend for this year. Uh, I put in a line for charge point lease, cause we lease those charging stations and I believe it's twenty-four hundred a piece. So I thought, you know, we can set this out in appropriation report in our budget. We, we, it'd be nice instead of just dumping it. Into, uh, outside labor or something or whatever. Uh, down below that in the green, is that a better color for you?
Waster water.
Waster water, yeah. Uh, wastewater, uh, I and I, uh. Yeah, and I know Bruce has left, but we, and Jeff can. Um, comment here if he wants, but you know, we had a letter from state about I and I. They're always honest, I D M, always honest for I and I. We should probably have a separate item and we do a lot of I and I work and that'd be a line item that we could post expenses to for that. Originally, I was thinking, well, we've got this big video expense coming up that time and I, but. Looks like we might save some money there and we can use the money appropriated for other I and I work in sewer. So that's what that's all about. EPA lead pipe removal, I thought, well, we need a line there. We, you know, we've got software expense next year coming up. Oh, then engineering, we know we have a contract in D E S. For engineering services and I think it's twenty thousand a year. I don't, I mean, I, I.
Thought it was fifteen, I think.
Was it fifteen or twenty? Well, I've got twenty in there now across the three main utilities now and stormwater. I have put an item in there for stormwater, although that could, we could change that. It's not part of the one. Uh, but we've been doing a lot of work in storm, trying to get some. Idea and cost of various projects. I could move that out of there. Uh, da, 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 da. You know, I put a separate line up there, Brandy, for police tire. On the far right, on the yellow, five thousand. Um. Cause that's something that's, it's a major expense. We should break it out from operating expense. I build it on his budget, so. Uh. Yeah, as far as police and fire, everything that you guys submit, I pretty much use the same figures, uh. That you submitted. I'll, uh, I can get you a copy, Bill. I should have printed out more these times. I printed out eight. I guess I didn't have enough. Um. On the next page, just talking to Jeff. You see in the green again as opposed to red, we have.
Waster water.
Waster water again. I like that waster. Uh, waste of water, roll-off trash. Um. I believe, is that eighteen thousand about right? Jeff, I know we talked about that. I, I think I understood what.
It's a pretty good estimate. I can solidify that for you.
You know, it's a big expense coming out of sewer. We should probably break it out. Storm basin cleanup, that came up the other night in, 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 uh, stormwater meeting. And, you know, historically, we, well, back in the day, we used to. Actually contract here a local firm to clean those out eighty hours, every couple, eighty hours for two weeks every year, we used to do that. Brown Escobee.
Oh.
Yeah, we used to do that. Uh, that amount may be high. I, I don't, I probably not, but you know, we, we were thinking, well. We should probably put a line on the stormwater to do that. It's a big part of stormwater. You have the collection basins, collect the water and get it out of town and they need to be cleaned out every now and then, so. That's in there, uh. Economic development line and property cleanup. We used to put some very small amounts in those. Yeah, I took those out and combined them into. Engineering under D E S. Uh, proper cleanup is a thousand dollars. But I've been thinking here in the last day or two and especially tonight, maybe in economic development, we should put a line in there, line items reads like, uh, uh. Property acquisition appraisals, cause we seem like we keep doing that and we don't break it out. And maybe we should have that and maybe that shouldn't even be here. Maybe it should be in general, but it's something we keep doing and, and, and we should probably maybe break it out some more. Um. Yeah, so anyway, and I don't want to go too far down the road here, but you know, you see down there, the revenue estimates are for twenty twenty-two. You have in your packet, uh, how I estimate those, how to actually have several years of estimates and what actually happens and what the variance is. So usually it's pretty close. Um, that's on back in there, but, uh, so those are twenty twenty-two estimates, not twenty twenty-three revenue. So you can see where we're running in a whole. In different funds. You go to your next page and that's where. You know, we look at the, what kind of rate issues we have and what we need to do, which will be coming up in a meeting real soon. And you can see the percent and what the revenue would be from those. And, uh, then down below you have. More fun stuff, but oh, a big thing, big thing in the budget is funding, funding of depreciation. You know, we're, we're supposed to do that by state statute, I believe. I mean, they came out with something. We haven't been doing it enough, very little. And we, so I put in amounts, the amounts in sewer and water are actually based on a fund, the, the, the rate study two years ago with Brock, uh, Light. You know, that's, um, probably about right. It's based on the physical assets. I think sewer actually has more assets than light department. As far as total cost.
Very well could.
And, and, uh, so those amounts are, are, are pretty, pretty good numbers to go with. Uh, purchase power has been bumped up historically on purchase power. We've been spending about two point. Three, two point four million a year and we know we got a nine percent increase. So it's up to two point seven million that purchase power cost. Uh. So, yeah, so, yeah, look these things over and get back with Brandy or. Let her know if anything, you, you, you see, uh, been a lot of people work on this thing. I have numbers from all over the place. Uh, got, uh. Um. Attorney updated in there, very small increase, basically cost of living, uh.
It's not small. Cost of living.
Well. Well, compare, okay, whatever. Yeah, you got a little thing in there about our town dead as of, uh, the end of the year. It's always fun to look at that. So, yeah, just look it over. I'll update for liability and, and, and property insurance. Um, that's gonna increase. Actually, that's a pretty good increase there for across. All areas. And gosh, what was the total, total increases? Twenty-seven thousand or so with, I think, with, um, liability or workers' comp.
That.
Yeah, that's, 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 uh, went up there, but our liability went up. Like. What'd it go up? Did I get that wrong? Yeah, workers' comp went up twenty-six. Yeah, so I still, this is not right. This went up, yeah, so we're up more now. We're twenty-six. Uh, yeah, you weren't here for that part, were you?
Yeah.
You were here for workers' comp?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so that, so we have twenty-six workers' comp. We have, uh, what is it here in property casualty? We have five, six, seven, well, eight roughly. So, yeah, you're looking at.
I don't think that our liability impacts increased that much based on what we didn't add. I mean, I think that's.
See, you're looking at a thirty-four. Thirty-four thousand increase. So that's, that's gotta be, uh, put in our budget. Uh, duh, 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 duh. You know, as far as, uh, the vehicles that's coming out of general fund, yeah, I guess we should talk about that, you know, just some thoughts and see what the board thinks about. You know, we have that money we get from the county that flows from the state to the county to us for public safety, okay? And we have fun. We had to stop using until we got it caught up. Uh, looks like next year, based on what I can find on the internet with the county, we're getting about eighty-eight thousand, six hundred fifty from the county for public safety.
Which is up a little more again, isn't it?
Um. My, my, I, I, my thoughts are just let that build up in that public safety fund for another whole year. We're in the black now. In that fund, but I just let it build up for another year and, and starting twenty twenty-four. We'll expense directly out of that. What we can for police and fire and not exhaust it totally. So we have a little reserve and then the, the range will have to come out of the, uh, the general fund. I mean, what do you folks think?
Makes sense.
Um. And so that's my thoughts on that. Obviously, the, the, the vehicles will be coming out of general. I should probably put together a spreadsheet for general. Starting with our year-end balance that we think we're gonna have and, and just show what we anticipate coming out of there that's, uh. Public safety. And we're, we're in pretty good shape in general fund, uh, right now. We have a balance of a little over a million dollars, which is, uh. There have been in the last twenty years, way back, where that poor fund was, uh, yeah, could hardly see. It's bad, it's bad. So we, we've come a long way. Uh. So, yeah. I don't know what else to mention right now. Anybody else got anything?
I did receive firearms money today from the state, so it'll be just the once a year, our average amount, it's twenty-eight, sixty, or twenty-six, eighty.
We really did come through with that.
They really did come through with that. Thought they had blown smoke.
Year two, but that's in law enforcement.
That'll almost buy the ammo that we have to shoot qualified for here.
Twenty, twenty eight, sixty or vice versa, but I just received that money today.
So how many rounds do you have to shoot?
A minimum, a minimum would shoot.
Minimum of fifty per weapon. More experienced officers, for new officers, they have to fire a hundred and fifty, just to go through pre basic. And then another fifty for each additional year minimum.
While you're at the academy, you shoot.
I don't know, a ton.
Do our reserves have any, any, any shooting? They have to qualify too.
Yeah, they have the same continuing.
Same thing, okay. Okay, that's good.
If you give somebody a plan, you want them to be.
Well, yeah, you wanted to have some practice there. Well, gosh, I don't know what else to talk about, uh. Yeah, two weeks from tonight, we need to to approve, well, we'll have the payroll ordinance finally done, I think. I'm optimistic. Uh, we have, uh, following that meeting, what is it? No, it's that Wednesday. We have our public hearing for rate issues. Uh, maybe that'll be the last meeting of the year.
Our, speaking of the salary ordinance, ours is always a hard one to figure out when it comes to an hourly wage.
Yes.
Uh, I believe, looking at the way you did it, you based it off of forty hours, which would give us like nineteen seventy one per hour. Forty two hours, cause we work in eighty four hour, two week pay period. It's a little less than that. Uh, that becomes important if we have to pay someone out or when we're doing overtime for like operation pull over, because they base it on our.
Well, yeah, I use a forty hour work weeks, that's the way I think, or eighty hour pay period, but, uh, whatever you gotta do to make it nineteen seventy one is what we want to achieve. Uh, well, we we shouldn't have any payouts after this year, we're going to overtime, right? Cause we're going to overtime.
You have vacation days.
Okay, they could accumulate, vacation days, yeah. There would be some accruals that we'd have to make, take care of it. Yeah, comp time. Yeah, we're doing with comp, going OT, um, so, yeah, whatever we have to do to make that, I mean, that's objectives, to have the forty one. Thousand starting and the and the nineteen seventy one per hour based on that total, so you guys figure out how to make it work, right? These aren't wage ordinances, always fun, um, yeah. Well.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. A second, all in favor?